Okay, welcome everybody to our county council meeting on October 19th, 2021. We'll move forward with the agenda. Everybody's had a chance to review it. I'm Secretary of Council. We'll move forward with motion. Moved by Councilman Fladlow, seconded by Councilor Kostin. Be resolved, Councilor Towne Nipoa approved the regular meeting agenda for October 19th, 2021. All in favor? There. Okay, and last minute, last month's minutes. Have you guys had a chance to review those? Any errors or omissions? Can we move forward with the motion on that? Moved by Councilor Joe, seconded by Councilor Gerard. Be resolved that the Council of Towne Nipoa approved the minutes of the regular meeting held October 5th, 2021 as circulated. All in favor? There. Okay, where are the council reports? I didn't have a chance to ask. I don't know if anybody has one. Can I get them up? Councilor Fladlow?
Yes, on October 7th, I went down to Rossburn for the Rossburn subdivision Trail Association meeting. It's our second one in person again after meeting almost a year by Zoom. And at the meeting, some of the highlights to note is they're still replacing signs throughout the trail. They're almost complete now. Our maintenance people have been working on it. And just a reminder to people that use the trail, there's no motorized vehicles permitted on the trail. However, we do allow skidoo's to use the trail. That's the only type of vehicle. Anyone else is going to damage the trail. The trail is owned by Trails Manitoba, even though we have the ownership to run and maintain the trail. We're continually doing maintenance and it costs a lot of money. And other users that use the trail that aren't permitted, such as motorized vehicles, are causing damage. The trail actually extends, the land that's owned by the trails is 99 feet in total width. Basically, from the center of the trail, it's about 47 feet on each side. So if you wondered how much property was part of the trail, so even landowners that are adjacent to the trail, they shouldn't be going and using it and causing some damage. Something to note too is that Rosedale, one of our partners, is actually withdrawing from the group for the time being. So that was shocking news to us at our last meeting and they made it official over the last couple of days. So for the time being, they're pulling out. And on a brighter note, there is a new website now called www.rossburnsubdivisiontrail.ca. And we have a new Instagram page and Facebook page. And the RSTA, the Trail Association, would love to hear any feedback you have, any pictures you have, or any of your experiences if you want to tell your stories. We'd love to post them on our pages. So the trail is approximately 170 to 180 kilometers from here all the way basically to Rossburn or the border. So if you wanted to submit anything, please feel free to do so if you want to take a look at that webpage.
Thank you, Jason. Councilor Gerard? Did Rosedale give a reason as to why they would exit another form of recreation within the region?
You know, over the years, this is what we're suspecting, over the years, every municipality has covered the cost of the repairs and maintenance to the trail. And lately though, we've been very fortunate to receive a lot of grants to support the trail maintenance. And municipalities have been claiming those fees. And I think Rosedale doesn't agree with that particular point, that communities aren't putting in their own fair share. And because of that, at this time, they're just pulling away because they put a lot of work after our recent flood into the trail. But other municipalities are claiming back that cost and Rosedale doesn't agree with that. So that is why Rosedale is feeling that at this time, they don't want to continue to be part of the trail, but they support it in spirit, but they're just for the time being. Which gives you a lot of food for thought too, right? Because we're all partners along the trail.
Yeah, so did they say that there was any intention that they would continue maintaining the trail in the interim? Put them out of sight to that organization?
You know, I think they're still going to do their part. They just won't be an active member at this time.
It's disappointing.
But definitely because it's our direct neighbor, definitely important as a highlight. I guess I have another report. I'm going to combine two recent library meetings together. So this is a Western Manitoba Regional Library report. It's a good meeting for me to share this with everyone. After I see the agenda, I was like, oh, this is a perfect meeting. So we met on September 15th and September, uh, October 20th. We're going to meet tomorrow. And I'll just give you that report tonight. Nipoa really uses our library service quite a bit. In August, we had about 1,500 items that we handed out to people and we had in circulation. In September, we had 1,200 items approximately. The main items that we're giving out to, to be specific, is adults are taking out materials and so are children. Teenagers, they're doing okay, which is not quite as much. So in comparison, Brandon does approximately 10,000 items a month. So when you look at our population to Brandon's, there is, you can see, we are strong user of our public library. Nipoa Library has a program currently running called Fall Back Into Reading. And if you're interested, you know, definitely it's to increase people reading more in the community. Please contact our librarian, Debbie Under, and she'll help get you set up on that program. And just to let you know, even though there's construction on Davidson, and it may impact some accessibility by vehicle at times, however, the library is still open for public usage. So please find one of the pathways to get down there and access some books.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, are there any other council reports? Councilor Kostin.
Yes, Councilor Gerard and myself met with the County Court Building Committee last week. And I think he, we had let you know the last time that there was a major leak in the roof at County Court Building. So we have had a company, Flynn, have looked at it, have put in a quote for the repairs for that. And we agreed to go ahead and have the repairs done as soon as possible if we can do that. We're hoping that that can be done. Those repairs were extensive, around the 18,000, but we do have a grant. He's going to be helping us with some of the repairs as well. Some of the stairs, there is some damage to the outside stairs at the back entry, which we're going to have looked at as well. And just a little bit of information that I thought was kind of interesting. The County Court Building was built in 1884. The last remodel was 1983, '84. That's the last time anything's been done there, like for remodel. So I thought that was quite interesting. There are some repairs that need to be done inside because of some of the damage from the roof that had leaked. But we're going to go into the spring of 2022 to do that, just because it's not like right away we have to. It's going to have to get done, but we need the roof fixed first. We were having somebody renting the space upstairs and unfortunately they are moving. So we will be using that rental object there, but hopefully we can open that to somebody else. Yes?
Okay, Councilor Kostin. With the, I see Prairiemont Health is submitting a LPM training program request. One of the site locations that we were looking at was the courthouse upstairs, et cetera. But it would need a elevator. We asked about it last time. Did you talk about it this time?
Yes, we did. We discussed that. We're hoping to have you let them look at the building to see what you would want so that we can work with you in that respect.
Oh, we need an elevator.
Exactly. And we did discuss doing the lift as well.
Yeah, Councilor Parrott, again, Towne Nipoa represents two of the six votes that occur within County Courthouse. And we had conversations with our rural partners on how we could make use of that space. We did have a conversation that that is a potential site, whether it would mean an existing partner relocating to a second floor if they didn't feel accessibility was an issue. Well, we've put everything on the table and they've told us to go back and be aggressive at pursuing wherever we can. And if we feel that they're lieutenant potentially, especially in that case, that they will work towards accessibility.
It's a bonus. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, America.
Councilor Parrott. Well, with the Davidson Street being brought up by our library specialist, I've toured the site a few times now and we had the water leak in the one spot. And I got to see from the very beginning to the very end when it was completely repaired. That was good. But yesterday was extremely interesting because every time they come to a new building, a new service hookup from an existing building, they're coming up with an unknown situation. They're, you know, you look at the shut off of the valve and it doesn't move. And from there, you can either break it or dig down. And every time they are doing this, they have to dig down into territory that hasn't, some of which hasn't been visited since its original installation in 1935, when they probably were using hand shovels at the best to install sewer and water. So they've been pulling out lead lines. They've been pulling out copper lines that are just going everywhere. And these guys that work for the Towne Nipoa are adapting to every single situation and making it work so that the future employees of the Towne Nipoa don't have as big a headache. So I'd just like to commend our staff in the Public Works Department as being able to adapt to every situation because they have not been defeated yet.
Good. I agree with you.
They had the big saw cutter over there the other day. They're not going to be defeated.
Okay, any other council reports? Okay, thank you. Manager of Operations, Dane.
So like thanks, Councilor Parrott, for committing stuff. I agree with you. Unfortunately, I have to prepare bad news and say that they have been defeated today.
Great, great, great. This is like one.
They would have to offer my sincere apology to the Legion. Their service was inadvertently disconnected today because we had an idea that maybe went that way, but there was no firm evidence it did. So unfortunately, the Legion will be out of water for the evening. They will be hooked up tomorrow. So the Legion service side somehow meandered diagonally across then hooked up in front somewhere by the Yellowhead on Davidson Street. So why beyond that, or else?
Yeah, but part of it is there in years past, there was no logging of where all the lines went.
Yeah.
I recall Ellen Street, when you were digging, you discovered a live water line that wasn't listed?
They discovered one today.
Oh, there you go.
There was a service lead coming off to the south. And an older, maybe remember, quite an older, prior to the Yellowhead, there was an arena there, I believe. And they found that service line still alive, stubbed off, waiting in the ground. So anyway, I am apologizing to Legion that are out of water. Davidson Street is progressing on a rather good note. The Yellowhead has been connected up to date. And I believe we've got all the service lines hooked up. So there's just the remainder of some of the sewer work to be completed, which should go a lot quicker after we fix the Legion tomorrow. And then we can start base cut on the entire street and get that gravel off and get it base prepped up so it's into a gravel stage and opened up to the public again. And speaking with, may believe they were supposed to get back to you. There's a firm date. But we have, they've encountered some slight delays due to weakened weather. The crew's coming here. The paving is in the fall right now. They were talking late this week now, possibly early next week, but they had some indications it might be this week still. They were supposed to meet and get their final schedules from their crew up north.
How does that, oh, sorry for interrupting all the time, but how does that tie in with minus six on Thursday overnight?
We're still okay during daytime highs. So as long as that ground and mid-temperature hasn't hit too low, we're okay. Cool weather is okay. We have a short haul for dash fault. So we're not going to lose too much of this repeat off it as it comes here. We're okay, that's it. Water treatment reservoirs progress nicely. The floor slab was poured. It had it swept here. They started the rebar tacking for the wall structures going up there. So you can kind of see how the concrete work going up right now. Likewise for the RCMP, they did pour the floor slabs in that section. It itself went really well and now we're progressing on to the next stage of the tree steel erection and cinder. The basin work is there shortly. Writer note, the wastewater treatment facility is now tenured. It's posted on the Mountain Water Services Board website. So we staged two look-aloud upgrades. Those test hole dates are scheduled for October 28th. So we've lined up contractors to complete that so that any successful builders or invigilations should begin to come out. We'll struggle with some ground condition. The staff also included a Highway 5 sewer extension from the far end to the approach of Coop Laverrier. So that work has been completed. That was actually an easy dig, so that went quite nice. We've been doing some building maintenance all around here. And today we did have power back in between the ductwork. They're moving over to the library and the nursery school in a couple of days. And that's everything I recall.
Okay, thank you, Dane. Any questions or any comments? Okay, I guess we'll move on to finance. We have one outstanding utility account. We need to add the taxes. Everybody's had a chance to look at that, if everybody's comfortable. Can we move forward with the motion on that? Moved by Councilor Gerard. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hiddley. Where Section 252-2 of the Municipal Act authorizes a municipal to collect debts in the same manner as a tax may be collected or enforced under the act and where the outstanding utilities which remain unpaid and uncollectible therefore may be resolved that the Council of Towne Nipoa approved the addition of the following outstanding utilities to the taxes in the amount of $1,173.93. All in favor? There. Okay, and we're also approving the financial, September financial statement. Everybody's had a chance to review that. There's no questions, comments. Can I move forward with the motion on that? Moved by Councilor Madoff, seconded by Councilor Kostin. Be resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ended September 30th, 2021. All in favor? There. Okay, Colleen O'Murray, whoever's addressing this. We have the STANTEC project status update for our 2020 flood remediation, Park Lake and Golf Course. Colleen, you're on as Colleen.
Do you want to read by word or? So STANTEC was out a week ago and Dane and I sat with them to discuss where the project was going and try and make a day timeframe for where we will see some works happening over there. As much as people in the community think, you know, Park Lake has been slated for resting in peace for the rest of its eternity, that is not the case. We have to work around course seasons and timeframes and construction crews and design and licensing and all those things. So here's your update. This will reference both three different areas. Site one being Park Lake Dam, site three being Park Lake Drive Bridge, and sites 18 and 25, which would refer to the Nipoa Gulf and Country Club Bridge and the Riverbank Erosion. So if you're wondering why those numbers are the way they are, we actually had 25 impacted sites in the area. These being the most notable four that are going to cost us the most amount of money through our DFA claim to repair. Park Lake Dam, so as I mentioned, we met and we discussed the options and the tender development for the rockfill riprap supply and the tree removal. So that would be, please wonder what's going to happen over at Park Lake. We had to look at several construction access options. This was tied in with looking which accesses we had available over at Park Lake, which one would withstand the pressure and all of the traffic that's going to occur. We figure roughly through fall and winter of this 21, 22 season, we're going to see roughly 1,000 truckloads of rock go through there. So after analyzing every particular access we had, the condition of the streets, ease of access, safety, all of those things, what would be the best route for safety? We decided that the construction access will be provided by Brown Avenue with a ramp constructed to access the reservoir area. The ramp will be located to the west of the water treatment plant expansion. There's currently a large spout pile of clay fill available to construct the ramp on site right now as a result of that expansion excavation, which is occurring over there right at this moment. Construction access will be required prior to the tree removal and rockfill riprap supply tenders. The access work would be included with the rockfill riprap supply tender. The tree removal tender will be a separate tender on its own. So more specific, the tree removal, just so everybody knows, once the berm is reconstructed, the requirements of conservation and licensing and all the powers that be say there cannot be trees planted on the berm. There will be no trees at all. We discussed how we could maybe think of alternatives that would see some kind of vegetation there, whether it be in the form of shrubs or whatever. We're not quite there yet, but we're working on trying to promote something there than just a bare in the berm. So for the tree removal, they were going to cut the trees upgrade in the first instance and they will not remove the root system. The removal and disposal of the root system would actually be part of the dam reconstruction package that will occur in 2022. All tree removal will be along the footprint of the existing dam to facilitate the dam removal. The trees then, we discussed where would they go after that. We said especially for that kind of volume, we do not want them being taken to the compost area because all that means is we have to then do something with them. And then we have to haul them to a different location. So they're being directed as part of the tender to the north dumping area and not the compost area. And when we look at the rockfill riprap supply, originally STANTEC was looking at bringing in the limestone from other areas of province. We discussed the availability of that particular material here locally. We think we can supply enough of the field stone and the rock here. So based on discussions and sufficient quantity of large diameter field stone, we would source that locally. And clearly in the area, we have very well-known contractors that would be able to do that. And more importantly, I guess, being able to make sure that the unemployment will be able for our local companies throughout the winter period, it would be a substantial amount of work to keep them employed. So we will be advertising the rockfill riprap tender within the first two weeks of November if everything remains on target. This will allow contractors the ability to source all the necessary rockfill in the late of 2021 and supply it early into 2022 while the ground is frozen. We'll get it to a certain location in site, whether in the riverbed or in within proximity. So when we ramp up next year, it is easily accessible. Some initial comments and considerations we discussed at our meeting was, as we all know, there's been some interest in creating a new route or a high-act route along Park Lake. We all know it cannot be recreated to be the ultimate recreational facility for swimming and all that. There is just not a lot of water turnover there to be allowed that to happen. So could we improve what we have? Possible. They were very supportive of doing that along the north end of the reservoir, talking about using the playbore areas there and creating, like excavating a channel that would allow that. So they were very supportive of that. We also talked about the nutrient-rich materials that are in the lake bottom. Could some of them be salvaged? We need just research. Maybe they cannot eat. Could they be land-applied for nutrient? Is there some farmers out there that would actually accept those and would want that? The thing is, of course, you're back to transportation and all of those things. Is it actually financially more viable just to, you know, to not bother? But we're doing our research, is I guess what we're trying to come up with. Can the waste material from the dam be used as cover material at the existing landfill area? What this relates to is the fact that where the berm flats over there and let go, anybody that's been down over there or have heard somebody talk about it, years ago is the dumping ground for waste that was generated in the Towne of Nipoa. So upon inspection over there, they found out a large amount or it was like pottery. They did not see any evidence of plastics, which would pose a problem, or any particular items that would be not allowable to be used as a cover. So we talked about whether that could be used as a, you know, it's just an opportunity for a material for us to do as a lab cover this summer. We don't know those answers, but we're exploring this. We also referenced some concerns we have with erosion at the inlet of the park area. Everybody knows that one particular bench sticks out there. And as the waters came down, the bench is now way closer to the edge of the little yellow embankment there than it was before the flood. So we're going to work in some kind of consideration how we would shore that up somehow. And maybe after I've done, whether Dane can speak to some of these. I can't remember how they said they would do it, but we'll try to figure that out. During reconstruction of the dam, the water flow would need to be maintained through the creek channel downstream of the dam. And they consider, speaking with Manitoba Infrastructure, regarding the potential spilling of water from the Urquon Dam if required. So what this relates to, the concern I had was at the point of time where we've got everything in place, we're ready to start filling Park Lake and let it create the water body that existed prior. Does that mean then that there'll be no water coming out of Park Lake to keep the flow into the White Mud River sufficient enough such that, in combination with Lake Urquon water that comes through there, there is enough water when we release all of the waters that come out of our loon system as well as what comes over to Highlights, that the combination of all those things are still in place so that we are not causing any environmental issues for any effluent discharges from the loon system? So they're going to take that back and look at it. They're going to maybe speak with Manitoba Infrastructure or we can. Either way, if it has to happen, we would like to be assured that somehow we can create a little better flow to Lake Urquon should the Park Lake drainage be tampered just a little bit to allow the Park Lake to fill. But mind you, this is until late 2022. We just want to make sure all our ducts are in a roll here. So for an environmental update, we received confirmation from Manitoba Conservation and Climate that an environmental assessment is not required for this project. We figured it would have been, but it is not. Other permitting requirements including, still have to happen, but they're not limited to Fisheries and Oceans Canada, the vehicle requirements. And a Manitoba infrastructure license to construct water control works. And those are all applicable and those are in the works currently. So that's Park Lake. Park Lake Drive Bridge. There currently, geotechnical lateral pile analysis is being finalized based on revised structural loading conditions and the otherwise, the geotechnical report is otherwise complete. The design is nearing completion with drawings and tender package currently being prepared. The drawings will be completed hopefully by October 29th and the tender package ready for review in early November. So hopefully we see some action over on the bridge through the legislature as well. As far as the Golf Course Bridge and the Riverbank Erosion over there, there is no current updates. They are doing their topographic survey and coordinating that with the transportation group. And of course, we all know the Golf Course is not closed or it was just in the process of proceeding to do so. And then they will ramp up basically their discussions and what they want to do and will be there through the winter. So the call falls correctly. We hope to be in a really good position by the fall of 2022 to be near or complete remediation. That was really quick and fast and I don't know if anybody caught it all, but full in the office, so we'll go over again. Any questions?
I like the timeline. I mean, it was great to live and do it in that one year.
Three years total, right, to replace a lake? I think it looks great and I think everyone's done a good job at getting to this point. And really happy to see that we're employing local trades and we're doing everything right, I think. I think in the end, it's going to look well. The only thing that I would say is that I'm always concerned for safety for that, even though Brown Street is the best location. A thousand loads, you said. That's a lot, you know.
Twenty a day.
Okay.
So put it in perspective, they would be working through the hours of the day. People are quite often at school or work or wait. We will make sure that notification goes out to the public to avoid or deter or whatever you need to do. It's a wide-out street. We will make sure, you know, this is a corridor for this particular activity. It'll be all quiet somehow. I don't know how. I really met up with Dane's department. We're going to do our best to make sure there is awareness in the community. So I think they were talking roughly 20 loads a day.
Yep. So when you break it down to a daily number, it's not a very big number. They present us with all the options and when we evaluate them all, Brown is still just the best route to take.
Right. And definitely if there's damage to the street, we already talked that would be included with the claim, which is a positive.
Yep, it's also hungry in the come months too, so you're not going to have as much salt streets. It's normally frozen, so everything should present well.
Do you think it'll affect the traffic? Because we know traffic's already a tough, a tough one there.
It'll have a daily rush, like our 3:30 rush when school's going out and all that shit changes. That'll be our plan at that time, but. how that shift changes, that'll be our plan at that time, but other points of the day should be fine. If you remember, too, that we're going to have lighter winter traffic opposed to summer seasonal traffic, well, out for recreation travel, right? So.
I wonder if traffic services would be available to help slow down traffic?
I don't think we can do it at all.
Oh. Okay. No, definitely kudos to everyone for all this hard work, well.
I thought it was positive, too, that the policies can step back on one of the levels of permitting they said that they did not need to be a part of. So one's checked off the list of the many, but.
DFO is the big one.
DFO is still the big one, but we, one of those checkmarks, one of those potential roadblocks is gone already, so it's, and I live on Brown, I'm quite prepared to count the inventory, count those trucks as they go by. Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Like, we're not talking rock, we're talking rock.
Well, I'm, we're not talking some stone, we're talking Franklin Spring Hill stone, which I know what that means, so that's a good thing. I don't think the farmers will run out, we should be good there.
And yes, StanTech, listen, StanTech really believed they had to bring it in from a different area, and promised them they were going to bring in limestone, and we said, no, I think we can find some rocks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we will move forward with our bylaw, in which we did the first reading at the last meeting, which was the cemetery maintenance and fees. If there's no further questions or comments on that, we will move forward with the second and third reading.
Motion.
Okay, moved by Councilor Parrick on the second, and a seconder, Councilor Madoff. Be resolved that bylaw number 3208-21 being a bylaw of the Town of NiPaw provide for the regulation, maintenance, care, and operation of the NiPaw Riverside Cemetery be now read for a second time. All in favor? Carry it. And we're now going into a third reading, which is a reported vote. So if I can move forward with that motion, moved by Councilor Gerard. Seconded by Councilor Parrick. Be resolved that the bylaw number 328-21 being a bylaw of the Town of NiPaw provide for the regulation, maintenance, care, and operation of the NiPaw Riverside Cemetery be now read for a third time and passed. Carry it. And that is a unanimous decision. Let us carry it. Okay, we are into other business. Do we have anything, Councilor Madoff?
Yes, I, today I get a little bit in the spotlight today.
Perfect, perfect time, yeah.
Very excited to report back to you guys that on October 8th, I did a little session with AMN sponsored, a training session called "Weathering the Media Storm." So, you know, we have a few people of media here today, so definitely, it was a really good session, and I just wanted to report back to council that it was with Nicole Harris, a former media person, and she did an excellent job on explaining how to manage risk levels during a crisis, and providing the facts to avoid speculation, and how media is there to cooperate with us to help get the facts out to the public, to reassure them. And definitely worth doing if you have a chance. I know there was two sessions, I can't remember when the second one is, but if you get a chance to, but communicating with the public during a crisis. The KISS method, keep it short and simple. So that was obviously a nice little quote there, and then to try to stick to three main messages was part of the key. Another quote from the military, definitely, if you fail to prepare, you prepare to fail. But there was a lot of good points that I'm sure I'll share with you when we're not in the meeting formally, but I just wanted to share with you a really good session.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Anybody else? Any comments? Okay, we're going to move forward with the agreement. Moved by Councilor Madoff. Seconded by Councilor Costincheck. Be resolved, the Council of Town NiPaw do now adjourn the church meeting of council at 7:35 PM. All in favor? Carry it.